Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Upper Cape Pet Sitting is your local private pet sitting company on the upper Cape. We specialize in caring for your pets in the comfort of your own home, allowing for consistency in care and routine. Dog walking, puppy and cat care, off-leash play, as well as transportation services. Upper Cape Pet Sitting, we treat your pets like our own.
Simply Hearing is an independent locally-owned center for all your hearing needs. Simply Hearing is conveniently located in the center of Homeport Professional Offices. We offer all manufacturers, simple consultation, and years of service. Simply Hearing, 508-548-8123.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Dogs and Hogs, family-owned and operated for over five years. Our slow-smoked barbecue is available for dine-in, pickup, or catering, now featuring our homemade barbecue sauce. We also serve beer and wine, have gluten-free options, and lobster rolls.
We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish, direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 a.m. to search out the highest-quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has on our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calphi Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calphi cares about all your insurance needs, 508-540-2601, and online at calphinesurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth. Bayside Kitchen and Bath at 419 Palmer Avenue in Falmouth, where design and installation professionals work closely with homeowners, architects, and builders, offering a full range of cabinetry, countertops, and faucets. Bayside Kitchen and Bath, returning you to beautiful spaces.
Waypoint Living Spaces, carrying a large variety of products to suit your needs in any living space of your house. Waypoint, available locally at Bayside Kitchen and Bath or online at waypointlivingspace.com.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, 508-563-5070.
Family-owned since 1919. At Piraton Cape Cod, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment and much more. Located on Main Street, Falmouth, and in Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis. Piraton Cape Cod, 199 Main Street, Falmouth, and online at piratoncapecod.com.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Oppenheim and Nickerson LLP, 156 Locust Street, 508-548-8255.
Dolpe Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning, 508-548-5488.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, voice and data solutions, 781-930-5000.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, 508-868-0664.
St. Elizabeth Seaton Church, 508-563-7770.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders, 508-540-3625.
Wacoit Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Danny's Barber Shop, 508-548-6013.
Carl F. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Paul's Precision Automotive Repair, 508-548-3164.
David Rogers Electric, 508-274-2057.
Murray and McDonald Insurance, 1-800-800-8990.
The Davy Tree Expert Company, 508-548-2662.
Andy's Barber Shop in the Falmouth Plaza.
Chapman Colen Gleason, 508-540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth, 508-548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, 508-548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, 508-457-5252.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole, 508-627-4266.
Falmouth Volunteers and Public Schools, 508-548-1621.
Vidal Metalwork, 508-457-9035.
And Steve's Pizzeria and More, 508-457-9454.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Stop &amp; Shop, Windfall, Shaw's Supermarket, Walmart, Pie in the Sky.
For the folks that are in the bleachers, if I could have the first row on the platform of the bleachers for any department heads who are also town meeting members. So for those of you that are town meeting members that have the right to vote and are a department head, if you could come down to the first row so that our tellers can easily determine who they should be counting. And then if we could leave the second row empty, just one row, the second row empty, and then the rest of the public and citizens that are attending the meeting, if you could start in row three up. And if anybody has a physical disability for climbing, just let me know, we'll make an accommodation on the first row somewhere. But I need my tellers to be able to understand who has the right to vote at the meeting, okay? Row one, department heads who have the right to vote, and elected officials like selectmen, school committee, if you're up here. And then an empty row, row two, and then the citizenry and general public, rows three and up. Thank you. Okay, want to remind all town meeting members to check in if you haven't already. Your attendance will be published in the Falmouth Enterprise. Want to make sure that each member speaks, who speaks, introduces yourself by name clearly and precinct. The stenographer and I were chatting before the meeting, and it's going to be a little bit difficult for her to just turn around and recognize who it is with the mask on. So we're going to want you to clearly identify yourself by name and precinct, and for the public that's speaking as well, name, and if you don't know the precinct, village that you come from, or wherever. But we want to make sure we do that with each speaker so that the record can be accurate. Want to thank FCTV Channel 15 for broadcast of Town Meeting. Tonight, we have two microphone carriers. We have in the first and second division, Zach Bowerman. Zach, can you just stand so that they can see you? And in the third and fourth division, we have Philip Gessen. Philip, if you could just stand. Thank you, gentlemen, for volunteering today. So the protocol will be a little different for speaking. When you would like to speak, just stand or wave like you normally do, and I'll put you on my list. When I recognize you to speak, the microphone carriers will bring the microphone with the stand to your six-foot circle area, and put the stand down, and then they'll step back. You'll go up to the microphone, make your comments. Please don't grab the microphone or grab the stand, just talk in front of the microphone. We've got Mr. Carlson here to deal with audio level, so you just stand in front, talk to the mic, and to the people here, and then when you're done, the microphone carrier will take the microphone, wipe it down to sanitize it, and prepare to bring the microphone to the next speaker. For those that would be recognized in the stands, we have stationary mics down in the front for you to come down and speak from, and then we'll have someone wipe down those mics after the speaker. So again, we ask that you not hold the stand or the mic, just stand in front of it, and we'll make sure the audio level is accurate enough for everyone to hear. Should there be the need for any counted votes tonight, we'll be using the old-fashioned system, the tellers. And the tellers are in four divisions this evening. In the first division, Mr. Netto, in the second division, Ms. Cuney, in the third division, Mr. Baker, and in the fourth division, Ms. Schneider. So we will only be using tellers if the moderator cannot determine a voice vote on any of the articles or amendments. All right. As your notice said for the meeting, this will be an abbreviated Town Meeting. By call of the chair, we will take the annual financial-related articles up in turn, and at the completion of the financial articles, by call of the chair, we'll adjourn the meeting for a 30-day period, which is the maximum allowed now by statute to adjourn the Town Meeting. And at the end of that period of time, if we deem it appropriate to go back to Lawrence, we'll have the meeting. Otherwise, we'll send you another continuance of what the plan is going forward. But we have to at least do that 30-day increment at the end of the meeting tonight to meet the statutory adjournment or recess. Okay, would all present please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And we have the flag by the scoreboard in the back of the field. I pledge allegiance. Members may be seated. Heavenly Father, may our meeting this evening be not only an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how a community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask you to watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen. At this point, we'll ask town meeting members to recognize a moment of silence, particularly for members that have passed since our last gathering, and call to mind a longtime member of the Historical Commission, longtime Town Meeting member, and former teller for Town Meeting taking over for George Sampson, Cheryl Cousins Long, who passed since our last meeting. At this time, I'd like to start with the dispense of the reading of the warrant, Madam Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant, except for the officer's return.
You've all heard the main motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, I'll read the officer's return of the warrant. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and summoned the inhabitants of the town of Falmouth qualified to vote on Town Affairs as said warrant directs, by posting an attested copy thereof in Town Hall and in every precinct of the town, signed by Constable Kevin Casey. Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record for this meeting. This time, the chair would entertain a motion for town employees who are not residents of the town to speak on any issue before this Town Meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. By call of the chair, we'll take the following warrant articles out of order that pertain to the annual financial operation of the town. We'll be doing Articles 7, 8, 12, 13, 14, 18, and 48. The first article on our agenda for this evening is Article 7, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of elected officials. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator.
One moment, I forgot to do the quorum, actually. Yep. All Town Meeting members present, please rise for the establishment of the quorum and the tellers are returned to count. Yeah, we don't have to, but we will. Quorum, one moment. Barbara, what was the number there?
24 in the fourth division. 35 in the first division. The third division, 52. The second division.
The second division, sixty-eight. By a counted vote of 179, we have a quorum, and I call the annual Town Meeting into session. This time, I'll recognize the clerk for the swearing-in of newly-elected Town Meeting members.
Would all Town Meeting members elected on the May 19th annual election, please rise and I will sway you in all at once. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all duties incumbent upon me as a Town Meeting member, according to the best of my ability and understanding and agreeable to Constitution and laws, United States of America, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws and charter of the Town of Falmouth. So help me God. Congratulations, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Article 7 for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 7 as printed.
Okay, Article 7 as printed, this is to set the salaries of elected officials. Any discussion on Article 7? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 8, Article 8 is the omnibus budget, which is the center of your warrant booklet, the yellow pages. We'll begin by having a main motion from the Finance Committee, and then we will have a budget presentation. You should have received a handout at your check-in with what would normally be the PowerPoint presentation. After the opening presentation, we'll answer any general questions for the budget, and then, as I usually do, I'll go through each department section by section of the budget. It's not a blanket, it will be in that section, so if you'd like to make an amendment or ask a question, just stand up to be recognized, and we'll go through each department to the end of the budget. So, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion for the fiscal '21 operating budget.
Mr. Moderator, I move the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of $139,231,499.
You got some of them. Did you want me to go through them all? Okay. Hey, David. David? Just the changes. So if you get your warrant booklet, there are some changes on the line items, and the main motion, the Chairman will read us just the changes as they appear in the yellow section
The changes to Article 8 will be the raise and appropriate for the fiscal 2021 levy limits, state aid, and estimate receipts will be $134,701,75. There'll be an infusion of free cash of $500,000 for a total operating budget of $139,231,499.
So the revenue is the last page of the yellow section, raise and appropriate, Section M. That's the $134,000, $134,701,75, and there'll be a new category N, which would be $500,000 certified free cash, and adjustments to expenditure line items. To the expense side?
The line item for the health insurance, line item 250, will be reduced by $500,000.
So that's line item 250, fringe benefit health insurance, and its aggregate total 251. So that will be one reduction of $500,000 in the expense portion of the budget. Okay, that's the main motion as recommended with those changes, and now we'll have a presentation on the budget.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Mullin, Director of Finance. Try not to touch the microphone. So, as you know, just to briefly bring everybody up to speed, we had presented a balanced budget to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, what was in your warrant booklet, and that was the budget that the Finance Committee had recommended back in March. So since then, as you know, with COVID-19, we are projecting reduced revenues, and so I made some recommendations, Town Manager made some recommendations, to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee on the FY 2021 budget with the reduced revenues. So when I give this presentation, it might be a little confusing because I'm telling you what the changes were since we presented the budget back in March, but I also want to tell you a little bit about what the budget was back in March, and I think hopefully everybody read the Town Manager's budget message in the end of the appendix of the warrant booklet, and it would tell you some of our new initiatives. So I do want to mention, when we were looking at reducing the revenue estimates in the amount of $3,012,260, we really, you know, with the shutdown of restaurants, hotel motel, slowdown in beach receipts, we really wanted to look at that for FY 21 and reduce those estimates. And so there's a list in the presentation of the estimates that we're reducing. So we projected estimates for FY 21 and we're reducing them on the projection. Just a note, you know, usually when the economy slows down, you'll see a slowdown in motor vehicle excise, the meals and the hotel motel tax, there is, you know, a reduction. And it's difficult to really project for FY 21. We know there'll be a reduction, but you know, this changes every day and every week, you know, with the opening of some of the small businesses and the governor's orders. So we're trying to, you know, with the projection of the FY 21 budget, I am being overly cautious with what we're presenting tonight. We want to be able to set the tax rate, and I think this is being very cautious, knowing that, you know, we should be able to move forward with this. Other charges for services are mostly beach. There was a reduction of $400,000 libraries, the library has been closed. Those are really fines and small revenue sources. And the recreation was a decrease of $100,000. There's a modified recreation program, but it won't bring in nearly as much as we anticipate. And the other one is state aid. Now, there really hasn't been any figures that have been presented for state aid, but we know that, you know, there's a reduction in revenues all around. And the question is, will the federal government maybe step in and make state aid whole, if you will? So we're still waiting to hear about that, but again, I wanted to be overly cautious and take a reduction. So the reduction in state aid would be around $772,000. And that's why you see the influx of free cash. And I do want to mention that the reason why we're making the recommendation of free cash, it will be for one year only. We have additional free cash that wasn't appropriated from last fiscal year, and to be overly cautious, I think this really, we really feel that this was the way to the direction to move. So how do we actually balance the budget with that reduction? Well, we're recommending not to fund the reserves. Usually, every year, we'll have three Town Meeting articles, and we fund the capital stabilization, other post-employment benefits, and workers' comp trust. We have really good reserves with our bond rating, and I also had a conversation with our financial advisors, just to make sure this plan was solid and we could, you know, continue and make sure we continue with the high bond rating, and they felt that it was. But we've been very fortunate where we've been able to fund our reserves every year from reoccurring revenues. And, you know, I didn't start out this presentation with the reoccurring revenues and reoccurring expenses with one-time revenues, one-time expenses, but that really does still drive what we're doing. And so when we see a downturn like this, and this happened all of a sudden, as you know, we are using these funds to fund the budget, and we will look and we keep an eye on it, and we will look at FY 22, but we won't always be using, you know, again, free cash is just for that one year. And then we will get back to refunding our reserves in the next fiscal year. There was a $350,000 budget reduction from Cape Cod Technical High School, and that happened, it was from my projections, so we were able to use that. We hadn't, you know, moved that to any other area in the budget. There's a recommendation of reducing the health insurance budget by $500,000. We have been funding the health insurance budget even a little bit more sometimes than what the rates are, and sometimes it's a little bit less. It's a smoothing mechanism, so some years, and it's been a while since the health insurance rates have increased, you know, 10% to 12%, but that eats up a lot of your revenue, so... But we've been funding around 70%, and then we've been reducing, but we still have a good amount in that line item, and we feel that, you know, we can reduce that line item by $500,000. As you know, we usually use that line item to fund other items in the budget in the present fiscal year. And then the $500,000 of free cash for one year only to partially offset that state So, you know, when you, so now I'm going to get into a little bit of the budget of when we put the budget together, what we look at back in March. So there was a retirement, you know, our retirement assessment is increased substantially every year, and that was $521,000. The school department budget increased 2.5%, which is $1.2 million. And then again, we have the health insurance decrease of $500,000. But other initiatives or additions, I should say, that you'll see in the budget, and this is page five. As you know, we just finished the senior center, building the senior center, it came out beautiful. And so we want to make sure that we're funding that. We've been talking about this, you know, in projecting for this, in putting it in our projections for a few years now. So this is the year that it comes into play. So we'll be asking for a full-time receptionist, a part-time laborer, a part-time food service worker, and cleaning services in order to support the new building. Now, we won't hire these positions until, you know, we're open and we can actually, you know, they'll be working. We're requesting two additional police officers effective January 1st, two additional firefighters effective January 1st. We've been really, over the last few years, funding our public safety to where it really needs to be. And one additional clerical position for the health department. So if we needed it March, we definitely need that now. They've been very, very busy. And then a full-time equivalent for the finance departments for some procurement in the treasurer's office is a big need for procurement assistance. We're a large town. And also for property valuation in the assessor's office. We have an adjusted wage schedule for seasonal employees, and then adjusted wage schedule for contractual for AFSMIA, and additional library hours of operation. So for one year, we will not fund the reserves in order to supplement the potential revenue decline due to COVID-19. Now, I just want to mention, when we approached the budget, the change in the budget, you know, when COVID-19 came about and we looked at what we wanted to do in the '21 budget, we feel that we can fund the '21 budget without a cut in service, and I think that's really important. We're in a financially good place in order to do that. What do the other years look like? We're not sure, because again, things change so quickly, but we're definitely in a good financial position to take on these initiatives and look at this budget for FY 21 and be able to continue to provide the services that the Town of Falmouth are used to.
Okay, any general questions before we get into the department sections of the budget? I guess I didn't mention at the beginning of the meeting, only elected Town Meeting members should be on the field in the chairs. So if there's anyone sitting on the field in chairs and you're not an elected Town Meeting member, I need you to either go to the back of the field there on that bench or come up here to the, to the public section. So only Town Meeting members should be on the field. Okay? To my right, microphone to my right. Just stay right, stay, no, you're all, let's go over the protocol again. You're going to stay at your seat and the microphone's going to come to you. And make sure you identify by name and precinct for the record.
Karen Bissonette, Precinct 2. Through you, Mr. Moderator, for Mrs. Mullin. First of all, do we mean Upper Cape Regional Technical School and not Cape Cod? Okay. And secondly, can you tell me what we have in the reserve fund? It's not on.
No, no, just hold on, he'll bring it up. We need the microphone in the stand-up again. Try talking again.
Hello? Okay, thank you. All right. In our general stabilization fund, which we haven't funded, I don't think we funded it last year, because we're at the, where we want to be, it's like $6.2 million for our capital stabilization, it's $4.2 million. OPEB, we have, I think it's probably $1.3 million. So we're really in the capital and the general stabilization. And also the workers' comp trust, our claims have been not as high as they have been in past years, so we've been able to have a reserve there, and I think there's about $400,000 in that right now.
So is that considered free cash or is that an additional amount?
No, those are all our savings accounts.
And what is in free cash?
Free cash after tonight will probably be about $400,000.
Thank you.
We had a hand over here on the left in the first division. If you could stand, please.
Lilia Franton, Precinct 5. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask a question about the motion, the new motions, those letters.
Yep, sure.
Yes? I wonder if we are able to request changes to any of those, A through whatever?
Yeah, so those are the revenue sources to fund the operating budget, yeah?
The transfers.
Yep. So if you, if you change, if you were to make a motion when we get there, which will be the last page of the budget, if you change something, we have to have a balanced budget. So we've got to know where the money's coming from unless there's expense adjustments as well. But in the end, we need a balanced budget, and that last page is where the revenue comes for the expenses in the previous pages.
Thank you.
John Doonan, Precinct 7. The two additional firefighters that are listed in page 5, are those in addition to the override?
Yes.
Thank you.
The answer was yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Cap, Precinct 3. Could we get a little more clarification on the loss of $600,000 through the excise taxes?
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, that's just a projection for motor vehicle excise. So usually, when the economy slows down, people aren't buying new vehicles, and you'll see a reduction in motor vehicle excise. Will we? I'm not sure. Again, I'm just being overly cautious of when the economy slows down, some of the line items that might be reduced, but I think this does put us in a really good position. One thing I do want to mention is that with our estimated local receipts, we do generate about $4 million more than our estimates. So this is a reduction in our estimates.
Any other general questions before we do the departments? Okay, we'll start off with general government, Town Meeting. Town Moderator. Selectmen, Town Manager. Selectmen town manager. Finance department. Finance committee. Town accountant. Assessing. Town treasurer-collector. Town council. Personnel department. Information technology. Geographical information systems. Town clerk. Elections. To my right in the back. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Melissa Frey Todd, Precinct 6. About elections, there's a very small increase over last year. And I'm wondering if, in light of COVID and the potential for many, many more mail-in ballots, potentially with postage going out and postage coming in, if there's going to be an adjustment to this budget line item coming from town hall? And will this be sufficient?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I keep doing that. We did project an increase at the time of about 81,700. We do get some reimbursement from the state. So it's really kind of hard to project where we're going to be in the next year. I know that elections are looking differently. But we're very well-prepared. If we are doing mail-ins, that we'll be able to cover that.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, to my left. Yep, right here. Oh, same question, okay. Anything else on elections? Community development, the conservation department. Planning department. Zoning appeals. Building department. Health department. Public safety, police department. To my left.
Hi, my name is Sandra Famed Silva, Precinct 2. And I would like to make a motion relative to this line item, 93, public safety. And I would like to make some comments. Shall I do the comments first?
No, no, let's get a motion first.
Okay, thank you. I hereby make this motion to reallocate one police department new position from line item number 93, public safety, for the creation of an affirmative action diversity outreach coordinator to be allocated at 50% to line item 122, selectmen town manager, for hiring an affirmative action diversity outreach coordinator 50% time, and to allocate at 50% to line item 300, school department, for hiring affirmative action diversity outreach coordinator 50% time. The position will be funded at 84,000 per year. The January 2021 fiscal year budget is 7,45,893 for the public safety line item, to be deducted at 84,000 per year or 42,000 for a half-year, beginning January 2021. The budget, again, 7,45,893, to be deducted by 42,000. The net budget will be 7,3,893. Or...
Well, can you, hold on, hold on. Where's this? Yeah, where's the aggregate number? Because for the police department, my aggregate police department number is 6.8 million.
That was for a full-time position. But because the fiscal year begins January 1st, it would be a half-time position, I believe.
But the number you're giving me is in the 7... The number you're giving me is in the 7 million. So it's higher than the existing line item.
It is.
The number you just read to me is not aggregate.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Is it 6 million? Uh-oh, sorry.
So salaries and wages of the police department is line item 95, which is 5,781,332. So you want to deduct 84,000 from line item 85. I still don't know where you're getting the 7 million.
6 million, I'm sorry, 6 million. No, that's not right either. Sorry.
Let me try to clarify this, because I know what you're trying to do. So you want to take $84,000 out of salaries and wages and reallocate it to the town manager and the school department to 50%. So your motion is article, line item 95, to deduct 84,000.
Yes.
And line item 122 to increase by 42,000. And line item 300 to increase by 42,000. And let me just make sure you've got those line items right as well, 122. So it's not 122, it would be, line item 122 is public works, facilities, and maintenance.
I was using a different list. It's the list that where...
You have to use the budget we're voting on.
I'm sorry, yes.
So you want the town manager's line item, which is line item 9, which is selectmen manager. So line item 9 would see a $42,000 increase. And then line item for the school department budget, school department budget, 182. Line item 182 would see a $42,000 increase. So the amendment is to deduct $84,000 from line item 95 to increase line item 9 by 42, and line item 182 by 42. That's the main motion, the main amendment. Okay. Now, you've got four minutes on the amendment.
Is there a second, or do we need a second?
You don't need a second in front of this.
All right. I'm asking you to consider, in response to local, national, and even international protests, this particular amendment. And these protests have brought into sharp relief racial inequalities that permeate nearly every aspect of our society. The recent murder of George Floyd has shown us that we can no longer ignore these glaring inequalities and the troubling relationship between people of color and some members of the police. Poverty, inequality, incarceration, and murder, sometimes at the hands of law enforcement, must end. And we can no longer fail to take action. Calls have been made to reimagine solutions to pressing problems of poverty, drug addiction, excessive incarceration, homelessness, and unemployment by transferring funds from police and prison budgets and reinvesting them into our communities to tackle these problems. We can no longer turn over to police and public schools responsibility for solving the most pressing problems of our time caused by our long history of institutional systemic and structural racism. So I am asking us to allocate the potential new position, funding for the potential new position for a police officer, to this affirmative action outreach coordinator. My desire was to reduce the police department budget and to reinvest in our future, to reinvest in rectifying the horrors of the past that have become so aware to us all in the past three or four weeks. For many of us, it was aware to us for decades, centuries. But I think we've had a consciousness raising in the past few weeks.
Point of order, come on, folks. Let's let her speak. If you want to speak, I'll recognize you after she speaks. And then we're going to take a vote. That's how it works in this democracy.
Thank you. To address the inequality in our community, we cannot look to the police to enforce an oppressive social system based on white supremacy, racism, poverty, homelessness, addiction, and unemployment. We must instead invest in affirming social and human services. And it is a position of an affirmative action outreach coordinator who will be an expert in the kind of outreach work that we desperately need in any community, and certainly in Falmouth as well. We've heard testimonies from our neighbors and friends about racial profiling, about hostilities toward people of color. And we need to have an individual or individuals occupying these offices who are experts in how to handle these kinds of problems and to help raise our consciousness across town hall, across Main Street, across our schools, and throughout the community. And I know that if we have an individual or individuals occupying these offices, that it will bring us some help in articulating how to solve problems of racism, homophobia, and other oppressions against individuals who are unlike the majority of us who are white. Thank you.
I had a member on the back left.
Mark Mancini, Precinct 8. I just have a question for the person who proposed the amendment. I was wondering if you could give me one example of a specific incidence of racism from our own police department?
Okay, folks, let's go. Yep. Ms. Silva, do you want to respond to that? I got you on my list, Andy. There was a question asked, so we're going to let her answer the question, and then you're next on the list.
I've lived here since 1984, and I know there have been episodes of racism in my own community. And I'm not going to name names. I'm not going to name episodes. I have, I know who people have been. And we have had some troubling episodes here in our own town. Maybe I should share an episode that was shared by a clergy person in town about racism. Because it's not, and in fact, this particular motion is not meant to disparage the important work that the police department has been doing, to try to bring other forms of encounters during policing situations. But as I said, the police cannot serve as social workers. They cannot do work with drug-addicted people, with people who are homeless, with people who have mental health issues. We need trained professionals, and we need the police to be there and available when we need, when we truly need, police, who are going to protect us in times of danger. And this is the spirit within which this amendment is being offered. Thank you.
Mr. Dufresne? They'll bring a mic to you. Yep, right here.
My point of order, Mr. Moderator, and to my fellow town meeting members. For 50 years, I've been a town meeting member, and I don't think we've ever allowed the political signs that have been put before this body. They should not be making this a political meeting. We are now discussing the financing of town government. And I think this could lead to further upheaval. There was a woman up here that silence is complacent. None of us here have ever been prejudiced on anything in the management of the town. And I don't like to see what's happening in that corner.
So Andy, you're correct in that we don't allow pins, buttons, and signs at town meeting. That's correct. And I'm learning here with this new COVID outdoor venue that we are, in essence, in our chamber today, even though we're outside. So I'm going to ask everyone that has signs, if you could please put them down on the seats. We've never allowed, at least in the 23 years that I've been at town meeting, signs at town meeting. However, if you would like to speak, you stand up. And as we rotate through, I will recognize you to speak at the microphone in the front here of the bleachers. But Mr. Dufresne is correct. It's my fault. I didn't say that we're in the town meeting, and therefore there are no buttons or signs allowed, as is the tradition at the Falmouth Town Meeting. So you will have the right to speak if you so choose. But I just ask that we put the signs down while we're in, quote, "the chamber."
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. I had another hand in the back row. Yep, with the blue shirt. I just want to remind folks, if we can, just to be able to stand near the mic and speak into it and make it a little easier for us to clean up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Sellers, 38-yard line. Thought I'd throw that out there.
Which precinct is that?
Precinct 6. So obviously, some challenging times we're all going through within our community, our country. But one thing that I'm always struck by is really how much I love living here in Falmouth. Fortunate to have grown up here, fortunate to have owned a business, fortunate to have raised my family, and fortunate to have been in a community that supports not only our town employees, our fire department, but our police department. And I had a great, exceptional opportunity just a couple of years ago to participate in the police academy that the town puts on, or citizens' academy, I think is what we call it now. And that was a very insightful, enlightening, multi-week opportunity to actually learn what our police department does, to actually break down a number of the myths, the fallacies that often go along with what you would perceive the police department to be. So I would say, anyone that wants to consider looking into reducing the police department budget, or any public safety budget for that matter, they really should at least take the time to go talk to police department. If you can afford it, go to the police academy. You'll receive just an awesome background of what they do. You'll also find out that they actually work with, they actually have a social worker that they work with now that addresses the number of the issues that they're faced with, with challenged individuals that need more than just a police resource. So I would encourage you to vote down this amendment. And I would encourage you to support the Falmouth Police Department. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones? Microphone in the front. I got you on my list. Yep, down here on my left.
Douglas Jones, Precinct 1. I couldn't agree with Mr. Sellers more about the value of our police department. So I'd like to propose an amendment to what's been suggested. Instead of reducing the police line budget, I'd like to increase line item N, the certified free cash, for $84,000. In respect to Ms. Mullen, I know that we do not want to use one-time costs for repeating expenses, but that also will give us a year to come up with the $84,000 in our operating budget in the future. I think both ideas are very important. At this time, to move forward with an affirmative action officer, given what's going on in the world, I think is crucial. But to support our police department is also just as important.
So the raise and appropriate, let me get the amendment right. So the raise and appropriate would be $84,000 from certified free cash, increasing that line item, and then putting the 42,000 in the other two. that line item, and then putting the $42,000 in the other two line items? The 42 in line 9 and 42 in line 182? Okay. So let's switch discussion to the amendment that's on the floor now, the amendment being adjusting the revenue figure for the $84,000 from certified free cash to then fund the $42,000 in the two line items. Discussion on that amendment. Mr. Clark.
Hello, I'm Peter Clark, member of Precinct 1. Principal of the high school for 15 years and in the central office administration for another 18 or 20, whatever it was. So I've had ample opportunity to see that, as hard as we try, there are insidious ways that white privilege has impacted people of color in this community. As a member of the Jewish congregation, for a period of time, I have seen how other forms of prejudice and bias are present in our community. And so I am very much in favor of this town working hard to create an active, energetic, affirmative action diversity officer. I miss the fact that we don't have one. I feel it can be only constructive for our community. And I support the amendment because I hate to pit a good police department against other needs. But I want very much to make a pitch that we are not, as a fine community, we are not free of the issues that are present throughout our society, and we need to do as much as we can, and now is the time to take that step by putting our money where our mouth is and creating this position. Thank you.
The front, my left, is it Mr. Neto? I think it's Mr. Neto.
It's difficult when we abandon the process. I've been a Town Meeting member for 40 smart years. We have never created positions using certified free cash. There's a need for this. No one's arguing that. How we fund the position by the amendment is what I'm opposed to. We just can't go, if we pass this not because of the issue, what prevents any one of us from creating a position that has to be funded in the budget? I mean, really, the right way to do this is not the amendment. If you believe that strongly in this, the money's got to come from a logical source that the officials of the town and the finance committee have worked on. Before this meeting is over, the next time we meet, and somebody gets up and says, "I want to create this position," where's it coming from? Certified free cash. You know, it's a double-edged sword, what I'm telling you, but let's stick, let's stay with the process that our constituents have voted for us to do. Before you come here, and the moderator's done a wonderful job for new Town Meeting members in giving you what their responsibilities are. And if you want to, to me, if you want to fund this position, then the logical way to do it, the way that makes sense, is to take it out of the police budget. And that's going to make a lot of people, you know, upset, too. But there's a process for all this. I'm going to get up later and ask you to spend less money. This is, you know, these are tough times in a lot of ways. We know what the issue is. We've seen it on the nightly news. We should do this. If you really feel strongly, let's do this the right way. We're going to be meeting again in November, hopefully, in the auditorium and not out here, because it'll be kind of cold. But, you know, this isn't an end-all. So let's just consider the amendment. I'm not talking about the issue. It's the process of Town Meeting, which there are rules and regulations, so to speak. And let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Okay, I had somebody with the blue, I had two back there. So let's, could we stage the two mics there? Because I got a few speakers on this side. So the gentleman with the blue shirt, and then I can't see who, was it like a green shirt? Yeah, yeah, waving at me. That one next. Yep, on the list, on the list, yep. It's getting to be a big list.
Peter Wazdar, Precinct 1. I want to thank Sandy Faiman-Silva for proposing her amendment, and I want to thank the proposal for a compromise amendment. Sandy is one of the organizers of last Saturday's March for Black Lives, which had great participation. I also want to thank Chief Dunn, who very quickly opposed, approved that march, and very efficiently and respectfully had his police department handle traffic. Chief Dunn also took a knee in Woods Hole. And that's more than symbolic. This amendment is not about the personnel of the police department. Over the years, I've grown to respect and really appreciate Chief Dunn, because he's corrected things his officers have made mistakes on in terms of public assembly and where you could speak. So this is not about personnel. This is about the institution. These are unusual times. I appreciate Joe Neto's trying to stay to the normal process, but we're in the middle of a pandemic and a really strange meeting, and we've had things happen for the last two weeks across this country which are unprecedented. If we fail to make this very basic gesture of hiring an affirmative action officer, I think we're letting something slip that's very important. It's going to take years for Falmouth to face its lack of diversity, the fact that incomes are wildly uneven, that health care is wildly uneven. It's going to take a long time and a lot of study, but the very least we can do today is approve a budget for an affirmative action officer. Thank you very much.
Okay, where the other stand is staged, and then my mic carrier, could you get that one down here to Ms. Welch after that speaker there? Okay, go ahead.
I'm Laura Peterson, Precinct 3. I echo what everyone else has said is in support of the amendment, and I also support the amendment. What I do want to caution all of us is, if it passes and we hire an affirmative action officer, our work isn't done. You know, we all need to commit to this process of really making Falmouth the community that I know we can be. And the last thing I'll say is I'll echo, at first I was concerned about the 10% cut to the police department budget, because I've always found the chief to be very collaborative in any organization I've worked with. So I would like to see the amendment pass, but I'd like to see us all commit to not saying, "Well, we have an affirmative action officer. He or she will take care of that. It's our job." Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Welch.
Hi, Kelly Welch, Precinct 2. I have a bit of a question. It seems that this amendment is a little bit in line with the recommendation that was stated under Article 31, which I know we're not discussing, but is the creation of this position. And the explanation for Article 31 says that the Select Board was going to offer an amendment on the floor to make this an advisory article, so the board could explore creation of the position through the actual budget process with a job description. So I'm just, it seems like this is just jump-starting that process, since we can't actually address Article 31, and I don't know whether or not the Select Board can actually speak to what that recommendation would have looked like, but I think it would help us envision what the future of this position, the likelihood of it, would actually be.
Okay, I'm going to recognize that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, if one of my other mic, the other mic carrier could come down here to the gentleman with the hat with the black band.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we had been working, and that article has been something that's been in the works for a while, with discussions both with personnel in Town Hall, as well with, as well as with the school department. For anyone who has been in town for a long time, I'm sure you remember Dr. Spivey and the great work he did. When I was in school here, Dr. Spivey really worked in the way that we're sort of hearing this job articulated. So he split his time between the schools and the town to address issues. And I think when you hear the word affirmative action, that's a really narrow way of defining what Dr. Spivey did. He was very much connected with this community, and when we talked about how this job might look, the goal really was to have, continue those conversations with the school department and with town personnel, so that the job description wasn't duplicative of the work that's already being done, and really would fill in some of those gaps where we feel we could make improvements. So we, you know, I can't give you a specific job description at present, but the goal really was still that shared town and school commitment. And again, the process has been one where we've been working to get feedback from both the town and the school department, so that it would be an effective position and would really make a difference in terms of services within our community to combat, you know, we just have to sort of look at ourselves on this field tonight, and we know that we could probably go a very long way to supporting greater representation, because I'm not sure that everyone here on this field represents really the true demographic of our town. So we have a lot of work, just as Town Meeting and a town community, we have a lot of work to do. So I think that the goal really was to think about a position much in line with what Dr. Spivey did, although tweaking it, because we are recognizing that some of the work he did has really been brought into other positions within school and town personnel. So I hope that answers your question.
Bob, you're on my list, if you want to take a seat. You are on the list, yep. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Richard Latimer, Precinct 1. I support Mr. Jones' amendment. As for Joe Neto's concern about this is an unusual funding mechanism, I would simply like to point out, we're not talking about creating a genitist position in the high school for some Town Meeting member's relative. We're talking about an important position that the town, I think, really needs, and this is an optimal time to get going on it. As far as the Selectmen are concerned in describing a position like this, knowing they have $84,000 would be a help more than a hindrance. Thank you.
Okay, there was a gentleman here in the third row to my right, yep. And then Ms. Fenwick. If we could stage the other mic as well with Ms. Fenwick in the third row.
Thank you. Jim Minow, Precinct 2. Going over this letter we received from the, Mrs. Faiman-Silva, the word racism, it's got to be mentioned eight or nine times, associated with the police department, associated with the school department. And I don't get it, I don't understand it, and I don't think it exists. I don't want the town to be considered racist, and I find either one of these amendments offensive. And I just have one question. Will I be voted, will I be considered a racist if I vote down these amendments?
Ms. Fenwick. Is there anybody over here that wants to be on the speakers list? Okay. I'll put you on the list.
May I speak now?
Yep, Ms. Fenwick.
Judy Fenwick, Precinct 1. I heartily support Mr. Jones's amendment. I often hear the word "tradition" used for "process," meaning that we've always done it this way. I believe in process. The amendment is part of process, but the tradition of process needs to give way to best practices. An elegant compromise has been offered by Mr. Jones, and I heartily support it.
Okay, Ms. Cannonopolis.
I am very much in support of this amendment, the more recent, the second amendment, and I think that it is, we are deeply needing to have more diversity, more minority teachers in our schools, for the sake of all of us children who are now growing up and looking at teachers as role models. I hope you will vote yes for this amendment.
Okay, I had like a rust color shirt in the second-to-last row with a hat on. I think it's rust color from here. I'm starting to get shadows there. Yep. I thought it was hard looking through those lights at the Lawrence School. You ought to be up here.
Joanna Bennett, Precinct 8. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said, but I think it does need to be reiterated that anyone who thinks that racism just doesn't exist in this town or on the Cape needs to do some pretty massive re-education of themselves. When you walk around this town, how many people do you see that don't look like you? How many people do you see on this field that don't look like you? How many bosses have you had that don't look like you? Or managers, or CEOs, or people who run the organizations in this town? If you think that being an almost exclusively white-run, white-led town isn't affecting us, I'm sorry, but that's ludicrous. You need to go back to the books. You need to be looking at what's happening in this country, because we are not immune from it, not by a long shot. So please, do yourself a favor. Read the news, read some black writers, look at some black history, because this affects us profoundly. And as someone who is raising a white boy in this town, it is something that I worry about every day, and I really, really wish that everyone in this town took it that seriously. Thank you.
Mr. Baker. Yep. Right in the center aisle there.
Bob Baker, Precinct 4. I'm appalled at what I see on the news and read every single day. I'm a three-newspaper kind of guy, and there's stuff I can't even read anymore. I did go through a little of this. I can't imagine what people are going through now. But I was six years old when my parents went to a greater Boston community to buy a house, and when they found out who they were, their ethnic background, they said, "I don't think you'd be happy here." Two of my neighboring communities to me were known as restricted communities. I had an uncle who graduated from MIT and couldn't get a job because of his religion. I had another uncle who graduated with honors from Tufts, couldn't get a job teaching school because of his religion. I don't think, I think it's horrible, and I appreciate Peter Clark's remarks, I don't think it's even as awful as what other people have to go through. I did spend 40 years teaching U.S. history, American government, including the Civil Rights Movement, and one of the highlights of my career was meeting and talking with Ernest Green. Now, a lot of you here may say, "Who in the world is Ernest Green?" He's the only one of the Little Rock Nine who graduated from Central High School. The other eight were all juniors. The next year, they simply closed the school down. So this stuff went on in the '50s. It's still going on in some places today. I am a traditionalist. I believe in rules and regulations. We do things certain ways. I agree with all of that. But it's also up to Town Meeting to deliberate, what does this town really need? And I think that's where we are at this moment. That's what we're doing. Different times, obviously, call for different solutions. How different was our world, our little world, our big world, when this budget was put together? It's amazing.
We can't move the question after you speak. Now, that's one of my rules. I had the back row on the left, and then the gentleman up here on the, that wanted to speak is next after this. Yep. Back, back row, yep, with a hat on.
Hi. Melissa Keefe, Precinct Four. I appreciate, I just want to start out by saying I appreciate Doug Jones's amendment to the amendment. I just want to make a couple of statements. I didn't receive the original email from the petitioner of the amendment, and I know that a lot of us town meeting members didn't receive it. I would also like to echo Kelly Welch and Judy Fenwick that I believe in the process, and I think that making sure that you have emailed and contacted all the people involved in decision-making is part of the process. I think that I'm not, again, I'm not really worried about where we're going to get the money. I think that it's very important to make sure that we recognize the diversity and to make sure that we are doing our part. On the original amendment, and I know that we've moved on to the amendment of the amendment, but I was very concerned where the 10% was going to come from. I think cutting an SRO or a school resource officer was part of a discussion that makes me very concerned as a parent, as an alumni, as somebody who looked to Cheryl Atherton, and also as a school committee member. So I appreciate Doug Jones's amendment. I think that it's important, this role is important. I wish that we could clone Mr. Spivey, and thank you.
Okay. Gentleman up here, just to that mic, yep, right there. Andrew, I got you back on the list.
Hi, anyone can hear me? Okay. Mason Long, Precinct Three or Six? Either one, anyone. So I'm in regards of why I'm here is to stop you guys from defunding the police. I do not want you to do this because, and I'll tell you a little anecdotal example. I'm a plumber, and, I don't know, it was maybe a month ago, I arrived to a job site, all right? And I turn houses on and off every year, okay? So we seasonally turn on houses. And I came onto the site, opened the door, to find that the door was kicked in, completely kicked in. So then what did I do? I called the police.
Hold on, do we have a point of order? Yeah, okay. So, so the amendment before us is not defunding the 10%, transferring the 10%. This is that one position from certified free cash?
Oh, well.
So that's where we're at now.
Where, where was the amendment to?
So the amendment is to raise $84,000 from free cash and then distribute it to the two line items to hire the affirmative action officer. It doesn't come, this amendment doesn't come from the police department line item.
Oh, well, then, I'm, I'm cool with that. I mean, if, if you guys don't want to defund the police, I'm a happy camper, all right? I do have like a little, little recommendation if you guys want it. You guys can just throw it away if you want. I'm just a voter. But maybe ethical training for the police? I don't know. That may be like a good recommendation. I don't know. Thank you. Keep the good work. Thanks, selectmen.
Okay. I had, I think it was Ms. Whitehead, or was she? Yep, Ms. Whitehead. Well, it's, it's difficult with the masks on. Lynn, if you could just stand and make sure you can see who we're going for there. There we go. Thanks.
Lynn Whitehead, Precinct One. I guess I'm, I'd like to discuss both amendments, but you were on second. I think no matter what, this is a first step and an important step. We have to do this. I, I've taught for 30 years. I've had all kids, K through high school. I taught a lot of them because I was in music and many, many, many kids I've had. I have seen the issues with children, and it starts with children all the way up. The resource officer that is a wonderful, wonderful position helps a lot. I worked with George Spivey for years with No Place for Hate, did a curriculum in music for the diversity and equality of all people. It helps, and it did help, but I've seen a lot of issues in the schools, and I think it must come from the parents. But so it's trying to teach through music, discussion, scenarios of what happens when a child is pushed apart and really discriminated in a classroom. Who is there to see that and then to address it? So I think the amendment, number one, somehow should be done. It's a one little step. My brother was a resource officer for the Falmouth, sorry, the Ducksbury School System. He worked with a diverse group of people, and he actually took many social classes, how to deal with all kinds of things. He helped a great deal. So we not only need a resource officer, we need to have this amendment, number one, voted on as a little, tiny first step. Thank you.
Okay. So I had a gentleman there with a black shirt.
Eve McDonald, Precinct Three. I'm hearing a lot of good input from fellow town meeting members. I want to commend you on that. I think we can agree that we do believe an affirmative action officer would benefit this town. I hope you will agree with that statement, all of you. Mr. Jones, I have to give you credit for trying to step up right here to present a compromise. I do believe, though, that we have a process we need to follow. And as Ms. Welch has brought up, Article, I believe it was 31, personally on the Select Board and some folks out here. By the way, that particular Article 31 was also on petition from Ms. Chandra Famon Silva. So it seems her email went out today as a bit of an abrupt way to get around, I'm not sure what our process as town meeting members would do. For the amendment that Mr. Jones is putting on the table here for us, again, I commend it, but I don't think we should move forward with it. I think we should turn it down and let the process for Article 31, the original amendment, before even the email amendment and the second amendment has come up, let that process take place so that we can do some very serious due diligence about what we want in the person and how we can hire them and how we can fund them properly. So thank you, and I hope you'll vote this second amendment down.
Ms. Famon Silva? And then we've got there, and then Ms. Shepherd. These two next.
Thank you very much. I guess since my name was referenced, I felt like I had to speak to it. First of all, the disclaimers, yes, an email was sent out mostly to people I knew. It circulated. It was not the final word on this. It was a conversation. But with respect to the fact that, yes, I did submit Article 31, I'm not trying to get around the system. I did want to point out with respect to process that we did have an affirmative action officer position, and the position was eventually eliminated, not when Mr. Spivey retired. And I actually worked with him at Falmouth High School many, many years ago. And, but it just sort of disappeared from our existence here in Falmouth. So we had an affirmative action officer, but town meeting did not vote to eliminate it. Nobody voted to eliminate it. It simply disappeared several years, you know, after Mr. Spivey retired. So the process, whatever process there may be, certainly didn't help to maintain a position that our town, in my opinion, desperately needs. I ask those of you who have commented on my email communication or my motive for, for raising this this evening, please don't impugn my character in doing so. Thanks.
Hi. Gina Torielli, Precinct Two. I respectfully call the question and commend everyone on their comments. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to close discussion on the amendment. Am I on here? I am? Okay. We have a motion to close discussion on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. To pin the chairs at the ayes have it by a two-thirds majority. And the question comes on the amendment that's on the floor. This amendment is to increase the transfer of certified free cash by $84,000 and to increase line item nine under selectmen town manager by $42,000, salaries and wages, and to increase line item 182, the school department, salaries and wages by $42,000. All those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. To pin the chairs at the ayes have it by a majority. The question is now back on the original amendment as amended. So this vote is basically the same vote to dispense with the underlying amendment. Yep? Question?
I call the question.
Okay. The, I'm going to call the question from the chair. We're going to vote to vote what you just voted on. It's just procedural. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by the majority, and the amendment as amended passes. Anything else with the police department? Yep. In the green?
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct Eight. This is more of a point of order question. Is it possible to take Article 31 and vote it? We've now voted money, but we haven't voted any instructions to the selectmen really what to do with it. I would like to see 31 taken. I, I don't know if we can do that.
So, so here's, here's the slippery slope. I can't allow that because I posted and said that by call of the chair, I was going to convene for the, just the financial related articles. I think the discussion here has been very clear, not only at this town meeting, but at a few previous town meetings relative to the issue. But I, I can't allow that because I didn't do a blanket vote, and I didn't have people come here with the expectation that we would have a blanket vote so that other issues might come up. And as you know, I try to keep to my words so that we understand the rules of the game when we start the game.
Okay. Thank you. It was just a question. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else with the police department? Yep. Robert Donahue, Precinct Three.
This is more of a comment than anything else, but under the present situations in the country and in the world, I would have thought that line item 96 and 97 would have had some kind of a handout saying exactly what these amounts of money are for, what they represent, and so we could vote on it in an intelligent manner. Does anybody have anything like this that could go and tell us exactly what 96, educational and incentives? What is incentives? Do they get extra money if they write parking tickets? Is there? I, I, maybe I'm being a little...
Okay, okay. Yep, we'll, we'll get an answer on that. And I know that the, the detailed budget is posted, we posted it online like we always do, right? Okay. Yeah. So as we've done for the last decade or so, the entire section by line item is all posted prior to the warrant, but we know that we can't publish that whole thing here because it's about a three-inch, three-ring binder. Chief, they're asking for you to comment briefly on what the educational incentives and the other expenses.
Chief Ed Wooddon. Education incentive, if you remember several years back, around 2009, 2008, when the economy tanked, there was a thing called the Quinn Bill. That's where the state paid a portion, the town paid a portion for officers who had college degrees. That went away. Then through negotiations, the incentive program stayed, where officers who had the Quinn Bill are still paid through the town budget, and officers who have college degrees that there is an incentive pay. So it's, it's in order for the officers. It is, it is in their salary, and it's an incentive for officers to become educated.
Mr. Donahue?
Chief, could you tell us what other expenses are?
I'm not going to remember them all because I don't have my book with me, but that's tires, that's prison meals, that's other expenses, office expenses. I could go on. Whatever it takes to run a police department. And I will get you those exact because it is listed in the budget book.
Consolidated Communications Department. Marine and Environmental Services. Department of Public Works, Facilities Maintenance. Administration and Engineering. Highway Division. Snow and Ice Control. Street Lighting. Vehicle Fuel. Fleet Services. Waste Management Facility. Solid Waste Collection. DPW Wastewater. DPW Water. Renewable Energy. DPW Parks. Education, School Department. Upper Vocational School. Community Services, Senior Services. Veteran Services. Commission on Disabilities. Falmouth Public Library. Beach Department. Bike Ways Department, or Committee. Townwide Expenses, Retirement. Unemployment. Health Insurance. Life Insurance. Medicare Tax. Other Employee Benefits. Court Judgments. Town Insurance. Debt Service, Long-Term Excluded Debt. Long-Term Unexcluded Debt. Veteran Services. Commission on Disabilities. Human Services. Falmouth Public Library. Recreation Department. Beach Department. Bike Ways Department or Committee. Townwide Expenses, Retirement. Unemployment. Health Insurance. Life Insurance. Medicare Tax. Other Employee Benefits. Court Judgments. Town Insurance. Debt Service, Long-Term Excluded Debt. Long-Term Unexcluded Debt. And finally, the revenue sources, A through N. The question will now come on the budget as recommended and as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 12, to see if the town will transfer the sum of $500,000 from certified free cash into the debt stabilization fund. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 12 as printed.
As printed. Any discussion on Article 12? Hearing now the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 13, to see if the town will raise and appropriate $300,000 for the purpose of wage settlements to the employees of the town. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 13 as printed.
As printed. Article 13, any discussion? Yep? Over here with the yellow mask.
I just want to share some information with our town meeting members. Back when this first article was voted in, actually, it was under my realm as town accountant, it was to influence the contract negotiations by having monies available to increase union salaries immediately after settling, thus not having to wait until a future town meeting to appropriate funds and to pay their salaries retroactively. At that time, and for many years after, many of you may remember, this article was voted to be placed within the town accountant's budget. And if it was not used, or any remaining balance would fall to free cash. At this time, I'd like to make an amendment to this article. The amendment is that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of Article 13 to be placed within the town accountant's budget with any and all remaining balance to close at year-end, as with all salary and wages. Thank you.
So to be placed in the town accountant budget, what was that last little part?
And if there are any remaining balance, it would fall to free cash. It closes out at year-end, basically.
Okay. That's the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It was weak in both directions. Let's try it again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's a pin of the chairs at the ayes have it by a majority and the amendment is adopted. Any further discussion on Article 13 as amended? Question will come on the main motion as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Pin the chairs at the ayes have it by a majority. Okay, Article 14. This is to vote to appropriate $971,507 for the purposes of the override for the fire department. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 14 as printed.
Okay, the main motion is as printed. Discussion on Article 14. Mr. Neto?
The override for the additional firefighters passed and that will go into effect. Our job as town meeting members is when do we want to authorize the expenditure of those funds? And this is very simple. It's one of the powers that we have as elected town meeting members. What I'm going to do is ask you tonight not to vote for this appropriation in this budget. That does not cancel the override. The voters in the town of Falmouth voted that they want to spend this money. Fine, we release the money. And why do I not want you to release the money tonight? Very simple. And I will use the exact words of our finance person. It's difficult to project revenue at this time. We are in the middle of such turbulent times in many aspects, and we did the right thing in creating the position in regards, I just was about the process. What I'm asking you, and I'll defer to Mr. Duffy to give a legal opinion, is we would give relief. We hear how the business community with the EDIC is looking for money for relief. Have you talked to your neighbors who haven't worked for three months? Have you talked to the business owner, my neighbor that hasn't been open for three months? They're asking for relief. Have you asked the landlords, not the big commercial landlords, the small landlords in town, how they're doing collecting their monthly rent? They're not. How can I collect rent from somebody that doesn't even have a job? What this would do is if we did not vote to expend this money in 997, almost $1 million, would be put off. We've already reduced this year's budget by $1 million. You see in these papers that we've been given that the FinCom and the administration has taken $3 million out of articles if we do meet in November. So what I'm asking you to do is just to go along with that thinking. Let's wait till we have a better financial picture. If you haven't worked for three months, if you're going to go out and buy a new car when the new model year comes out, a lot of our neighbors have lost substantial amounts of income. The voters in the town asked for the override, yes. And this would not jeopardize the two... We're hiring, we just hired two more firemen. By the way, we have hired seven fire positions. We don't hire people, we create positions. With the two that we just voted in tonight, we have created nine firefighter positions without raising the budget, without raising your taxes. Excuse me, not the budget, your taxes. And that would have been... Anyhow, I would like Mr. Duffy to clarify that the vote would be valid and that the selectmen would have to put this on the warrant in April and then we would see what the financial picture... Hopefully, by next April, we'll have a better idea of what the financial picture... So Mr. Moderator, through you, Mr. Duffy, is this legal?
Mr. Duffy.
The town at the election voted this override, and I'm not aware of any expiration date of the override.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. So the hiring of the eight additional firefighters...
Joe, we got, you're into your four minutes already, so...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Put you back on the list. Mr. Noonan?
John Noonan, Precinct 7. Just a couple of questions. The firefighters' salary, could you tell us what the salary and benefits would be without the training and the cost of the gear?
I'm not going to answer it, so who's got it?
Jennifer. This mic needs... Okay. I was looking for the chair of the Finance Committee. He has the breakdown, Keith.
Okay.
Can you... All right. The majority of it is salary and benefits. I don't have the exact breakdown right in front of me. It was on the website.
Where's the binder book?
It's eight new firefighters.
We didn't bring the actual book?
The training and the equipment and all that was probably about... Oh, thank you. Thank you. So the total cost per firefighter is $121,000. The yearly... So then you would do that times eight. So the yearly salary is $63,000. Retirement assessment is $16,700. Holiday pay is $3,121. Medicare is $920. Health insurance is about $20,000. Educational incentive, $1,000. Insurance for line-of-duty injury is $678. Uniform allowance is $1,680. Protective gear is $3,350. Fire academy is $9,910. Staff development, tests and textbooks is $590. And that went to the ballot and was passed in the override in May.
So my concern is, I'm in favor of the eight firefighters. I'm not talking against that. What my concern is, is the way this is presented to us. We're doing an override with about $100,000 extra for the next 20 years, or forever, actually. So we're doing an extra $100,000 in that, and that should have come out of free cash or somewhere else so that we're not overriding forever on those items, on that item, because that's a one-time fee.
You bring up a good point, and we had lengthy discussion about this with the Finance Committee because everybody wanted to know, what is the cost of hiring a firefighter? And you're right, there are some one-time costs in there. But with the retirement assessment, there's some estimates in here because until you hire somebody, you're not sure, like the retirement assessment, that can range wildly. And so we thought that that was pretty low. So anything, so the staff development and the fire academy is a minimal amount, would be rolled into the retirement assessment. So that's what our thinking was, but we wanted to just show the complete costs of the firefighter.
My concern is a retirement assessment, I mean, we have basic retirements constant. So there should be a number so that you can project out the retirement so we know what it is. So it's really... I'm in favor of this. I would encourage everybody to pass it. But my concern is, is the way it's being presented to us, it's not a correct use of our money. I don't believe. Thank you.
I just want to point out one more thing is that also with the health insurance, that was, you know, lower than a family plan, so...
I speak in favor of the article. I also want to make a comment that I love the diversity here this evening of opinions. Joe Neto, myself, we may be on opposite sides, but we're all in here for the good of the town. I also encourage town meeting members to look at the website before we come to the meetings. I've never seen a budget prepared by the administration with so many details. I have been in many cities and towns. This is one of the best. I ask your support. The voters voted for us to support this tonight. How many times do we go to town meeting and people say, well, what do people in your precinct think about what you should and how you should vote? My precinct is telling me to vote for it. So vote for this article. The voters have spoken. We're going to protect our town. It's not fire versus police or us versus affirmative action. It's our vote is to benefit the quality of life in this town, to support the fire department and all their efforts, and for public safety, let's make sure we do it and get it done. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Braga? You're also... Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Lichtenstein? And then Mr. Dufresne?
The voters have spoken. We certainly need these positions. I'm going to vote for it. I hope we do vote for it tonight. But in all good conscience, I have a problem with funding salaries from an override. An override earmarks for one year. After that, the money goes... Yes, it does. I read the article. After that, it goes into the general fund and it increases two and a half percent. Now, there is nothing... These positions were unfunded for a long time. There's nothing in here that says they won't be unfunded in the future. There's another line that also bothers me and has bothered some of the people that called me and asked me to speak about it. It says that all five stations will remain open until the new station is completed. So there is no guarantee that West Falmouth will stay open. I am going to vote for it. We need it. But I really hope the selectmen never bring us an article again and ask us to vote salaries with an override. Thank you.
Mr. Dufresne?
I'm not for the addition of this money into the general budget. An override is a permanent $1 million increase in the bottom line that we vote, all of us. When the voters were asked to vote on this, they were not given the complete explanation. Mr. Neto made a great presentation saying that, yes, we probably could pass this kind of an article, but not this particular time. We don't really need eight firefighters in the new fiscal year. Right now, the town of Falmouth is facing some very serious, dramatic cost, and all of us have to pay it. And again, I'm going to repeat, it's not that I'm against adding eight firefighters when we put the new station up in Hatchfield. We're going to need additional people. We just added two new people now. This money will stay not used for this year, but next year, it's a million-dollar appropriation again because we're voting an override. I'm not for vote... I don't believe, in all my years of being a town meeting member, and I'm close to 50 years, we have never, ever voted an override for salaries. I ask you to seriously consider Mr. Neto's recommendation that we hold this off until we see what the financial picture is going to be for, quote, "not only this group that's going to vote it, but we're talking about a lot of unemployed people and a lot of additional costs that's going to hit this town because of what the hardships of the virus." I'm going to use that as an expression. We've got some serious problems coming up, and we don't need a million-dollar increase unless the selectmen have a long-range plan of what they want to do with the additional $1 million. I ask you to just hold off and let this come back at a next Falls Town Meeting and see exactly where we are financially in the town of Falmouth. Thank you.
Okay, next, Ms. Salvatt?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Select Board, Town Administration. Good evening, fellow town meeting members and residents that are watching at home.
Just a little bit louder on the mic, please.
Okay. Mary Ellen Arwa, Precinct 4. This pandemic has affected all of us, personally, economically, physically, and emotionally, some more than others. And it has placed in an incredible burden on our community. Some families have been hit with reduced or unemployment. Some may not have jobs to go back to because their employers are not able to open. There are residents that are not able to make their rent, mortgage payments, utilities, and phone... and phone, food bills. It's a time we all have to work together to accomplish goals that are important to all of us. I have two items I'd like to bring forth tonight. The first item, and this all pertains to this override, is the town's health insurance budget. I have been looking for different ways that we could fund these eight firemen without an override. Our town's health insurance budget has been overfunded for years. It's been a pet peeve of mine. And I cannot understand why the town would continue to increase this budget year after year when the unspent balance at year end is over a million dollars. I've been to meetings and I've heard the word smoothing, I heard it tonight, to using these funds to cover departmental budgets at year end that may be overspent. Budgeting isn't easy, I know. But it is a tool. It's a tool that tracks trends. Our spending trends in this case. When the tool is telling you that you have over a million dollars left in one budget line item, and you're short in fire overtime, police overtime, legal, et cetera, the question comes to mind, why not fund departmental budgets for their needs and do away with some of these repetitious year-end transfers? Also, just so you know, there's a mass general law that allows the town accountant with the permission of the select board and the finance committee to move at year end, 3% of any budget to another budget to cover that budget shortfall. There's no need for a town meeting vote for this to happen. It was done this year, Article 15. The amount was changed. It was reduced to 666,550. And guess where it came from? The town's health insurance budget. And I can not guarantee you, but I will bet, that there'll be money left over in that budget at year end. The town already has savings accounts. They have stabilization accounts and they have a reserve fund for emergencies. Why are we over-budgeting such a substantial amount in one budget when we could be funding fire overtime, police overtime, legal, or we could be hiring town personnel? The second item I'd like to bring to your attention, and I just want you to know, the information I am giving you tonight on this second item is courtesy of the Mass Department of Revenue. Many of you remember that first page of our warrant booklet from our previous administration? The one that had the revenue and expense projections? It showed our expenses and then it showed where the revenue would come from to cover those expenses for each fiscal year. These figures in this page gave everyone at town meeting a better understanding of how we budgeted and set the tax rate for the town. One of the revenue amounts is called local estimated receipts. This is revenue generated from various sources throughout the year. I went back five years, back to 2015. So, as I said, budgeting is a tool. And it appears that the town's estimate have been much lower than the actual revenue received. Going back to 2015, the town budgeted 17,968,000. Actual revenues received were 22,633,874. I'm sorry, 633,874. That gave the town 4.7 million dollars in extra revenues. 2016, I can go through all of them if you want me to. They're all from the Department of Revenue or I can just give you the bottom line. 2016 was underestimated by 5.2 million. 2017 by 6.5 million. 2018 by 7 million. And 2019 by 6.5 million. Those are substantial figures. So, instead of voting a permanent tax override for the very needed purpose of hiring eight additional firefighters, because we do need them, we need coverage, we need safety in our town, I urge this body to vote no on Article 14 with the hope that the town will increase the local estimated receipts by at least 1 million dollars to appropriate to the firefighter's salary. Even though we will lose revenue in 2021, we already heard that, I believe the state will help us out. They always do. Governor Baker's already talking about it. It appears that the estimated revenue, if continued on the same trend, will still bring in a few million dollars over the town's estimate. In closing.
Okay, we're, that four minutes, well over, I guess.
I just have a little tiny bit.
But then you can come back for two. Yep, Ms. Aizendorf?
Martha Aizendorf, precinct six. Usually, we have town meeting in April and the voters vote in May. It didn't happen this year, clearly. In May, when the voters voted, we had ban sheltering for about two months. There were not the opportunities to do the big meetings, to get information out there. But I believe we are in an educated community and these people looked at the question that was going to be on the ballot and made an educated choice. I have been to a lot of meetings with the fire department. And when you hire a firefighter, they don't just come on the job the next week. It takes almost a year to get these firefighters trained and ready to come to our department. Plus, it's also hard to find firefighters. So, they put out the RFP, they don't get people just the next week all lined up, ready to go. With that in mind, I am not going to go back to voters and say, oh, you voted for this, but you know what? We know better. We're going to just do it this other way. And maybe we'll get firefighters, not next year when they're done training and they've been hired. But we're going to wait and it'll be about two years before we get these eight firefighters. We had two fatal fires. Fatal fires. I can't even remember the last time we had it. We had two this spring. I absolutely am in favor of voting for this article. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell?
Nick Lowell, precinct five. Mr. Moderator, I might need a little bit of help. I'm concerned on Article 13 that I might need to make a motion for reconsideration. And I know there's a 30-minute time limit, which I think we're fast approaching. And I don't know if you'd entertain this motion, but I'd like to just express my concern about it. It could also be a point of order.
Do it, do it as a point of order and then I'll take notice if, if we need to do something with it.
Okay, my point of order is that on Article 13, it's raise and appropriate, which would, I believe, normally be in the current fiscal year, of which we have eight days left. So, if, as amended, the, none of the union contracts are negotiated in the next eight days, then basically what we did was just create $300,000 of free cash. Am I correct in that thinking? And if so, I don't think that's the intent of what we voted.
Okay, so we.
No, this is 300,000 for next year to be rolled into the budget and to be closed out. So, what will happen is that it does hamper our abilities with negotiations if we do not have settled contracts in FY '21. So, we'll have to come back in FY '22. But it doesn't have to be in the next eight days. It just hurts us in FY '21.
So, but the, our amendment, so this is raise and appropriate in fiscal '21?
Yeah, right, exactly. Exactly. Yeah, so when you use raise and appropriate, we'll be setting the tax rate in November. So, it's FY '21, not this fiscal year.
Okay, because then, yeah, the amendment is to revert to free cash.
That part was not clear to me, so I wanted it to be absolutely clear in the record. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Ms. Fenwick? And then Ms. Albot, did you want? Ms. Albot, did you want a second round? No, you're good. Okay.
Judy Fenwick, precinct one. I just want to inject a little history into the discussion because I believe a statement was made that we've never voted overrides for salaries. Override, a two and a half proposition came in in 1980. In 1989, there was an $806,000 override passed. The stated purpose was to supplement the operating budget. No more detail than that. And in 1998, an override was passed on behalf of the schools for just shy of a million dollars. And money was divided into four buckets to be spent on one quarter of a million on technology, a quarter of a million on texts, a quarter of a million on facility improvements, and a quarter of a million on salaries. That's the history.
Okay. Yep, front row.
Jerry Potamis, precinct two. I'd like to move the question.
Okay. We have a motion to close discussion, move the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pin to the chairs if the ayes have it by a two-thirds and the question is closed. The question will now come on Article 14 as recommended. This is to appropriate the 971,507 from the override vote for the fire department. All those in favor of the recommendation signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. So, pin to the chairs if the ayes have it by a majority. Article 18, this is to authorize revolving funds. And you'll notice that the recommendation has one line item changed, that the recreation expenditure limit be increased to 40,000 for the total spending limit of 193,500. Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 18 as recommended.
As recommended. Any discussion on authorization of revolving funds? Hearing none, then the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Our final article this evening is Article 48, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from 2021, Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues, the sum of 120,000 to fund the Community Preservation Committee Administrative Expenses. The main motion from the chair of the, of the Community Preservation Committee?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 48 as recommended.
Thank you. Article 48 as recommended. Any discussion on the administrative expenses for the Community Preservation Committee? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. In accordance with the declaration that I issued, we've completed all of the budget-related articles. And by call of the chair, I'll adjourn this meeting until 7:00 PM, Wednesday, July 22, unless further continued and recessed by declaration under Chapter 39, Section 10A of the General Laws. Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations on your first outdoor town meeting. Did a good job tonight. Thank you and be safe on your drive home.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of town meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747 or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for fctv.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth, just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Upper Cape Pet Sitting is your local private pet sitting company on the Upper Cape. We specialize in caring for your pets in the comfort of your own home, allowing for consistency in care and routine. Dog walking, puppy and cat care, off-leash play, as well as transportation services. Upper Cape Pet Sitting, we treat your pets like our own.
Simply Hearing is an independent, locally-owned center for all your hearing needs. Simply Hearing is conveniently located in the center of Homeport Professional Offices. We offer all manufacturers, simple consultation, and years of service. Simply Hearing, 508-548-8123.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist, offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Dogs and Hogs, family-owned and operated for over five years. Our slow-smoked barbecue is available for dining, pickup, or catering, now featuring our homemade barbecue sauce. We also serve beer and wine, have gluten-free options, and lobster rolls.
We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish, direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 a.m. to search out the highest-quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has on our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth. Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath at 419 Palmer Avenue in Falmouth, where design and installation professionals work closely with homeowners, architects, and builders, offering a full range of cabinetry, countertops, and faucets. Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath, returning you to beautiful spaces.
Waypoint Living Spaces, carrying a large variety of products to suit your needs in any living space of your house. Waypoint, available locally at Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath or online at waypointlivingspace.com.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, 508-563-5070. Family-owned since 1919, at Puritan Cape Cod, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Located on Main Street, Falmouth, and in Chatham, Ashpee, and Hyannis. Puritan Cape Cod, 199 Main Street, Falmouth, and online at puritancapecod.com.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson LLP, 156 Locust Street, 508-548-8255.
Dolpe Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning, 508-548-5488.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org.
The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, voice and data solutions, 781-930-5000.
The Annie Hart Cool Team, 508-868-0664.
St. Elizabeth Seaton Church, 508-563-7770.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery, 508-548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders, 508-540-3625.
Wacoit Congregational Church, 508-548-5269.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057.
Danny's Barber Shop, 508-548-6013.
Carl F. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Paul's Precision Automotive Repair, 508-548-3164.
David Rogers Electric, 508-274-2057.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance, 1-800-800-8990.
The Davy Tree Expert Company, 508-548-2662.
Andy's Barber Shop in the Falmouth Plaza.
Chapman Colen Gleason, 508-540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth, 508-548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center, 508-548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five, 508-457-5252.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole, 508-627-4266.
Falmouth Volunteers and Public Schools, 508-548-1621.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More, 508-457-9454.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers Stop &amp; Shop, Windfall, Shaw's Supermarket, Walmart, Pie in the Sky.